...which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Something for our students. So we thank you. Would you kind of turn? I'm going to ask you a few questions. You can kind of face that camera over there. So I'll start with your name, your age, where you go to school, and your favorite subject.
Hi, I'm Shua Chua Thor. I'm 12 years old. I'm in sixth grade, and I go to Alps Charter School. My favorite subject would be choir, but if it's, if we don't have that, it would be social studies.
Okay, thank you. And here's the certificate of appreciation for leading us on the Pledge of Allegiance. Now Madison, it's your turn.
My name is Madison Marie Zanin. My favorite subject is social studies, and I'm proud to be here today.
Proud to have you here. Thank you. Now you can stay and watch the council meeting and go home and do homework.
Thank you.
I think I know the decision. First on the agenda tonight is a public hearing which requires three readings, and there will no, be no formal action taken on this public hearing at this meeting. First is ordinance 18-117, approve official mapping for the extension of Northwestfield Street north of Oshkosh Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. Second reading, ordinance 18-117, approve official mapping for the extension of Northwestfield Street north of Oshkosh Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. Third and final reading, ordinance 18-117, approve official mapping for the extension of Northwestfield Street north of Oshkosh Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. And Pam, did anyone sign up to speak to this issue?
I have no one registered.
Next, we have the first chance for citizens to address the council. There's a citizen's statements to address the council. Only statements are limited to five minutes and must address items that are not listed, and the council meeting agenda are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh. The common council may address at a future meeting. It must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. Pam, did anyone register to speak at this time?
No one is registered.
Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. These are items of a routine administrative nature that are voted on by the council in a single roll call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common council may request and may remove the consent agenda for discussion. Pam, did anyone register to speak to anything on the agenda?
Yes, item number eight, resolution 18-121, Patty Deener, 1315 Broad Street.
My name is Tricia Deener. I live at 1316 Broad. I come to you this evening in regard to the property over at 538 West 11th. I'm so glad that I got to go to the Planning Commission Board, and there was a non-honest vote for it, and I hope you guys consider what they did so this property could be sold, and it's going to be to a good interest, knowing that property's been sitting for 50 years, and it was a toss-up between me or Greg, and I'm glad that Greg got it.
Thank you. And there's one item on the consent agenda which is 18-122, which is approve spotlight designation authorized through development authority to acquire 1202 Oshkosh Avenue for $175,000 and 1450 Rainbow Drive for $50,000, which was an RDA recommended approval. For those of you who don't quite know, what goes to those addresses is, wraps a tavern, and behind that is a Peyton tackle shop. And we'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? I see no council member wishing to talk, so would you please take the roll?
Pack?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Rosie?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next, we have pending ordinances. The first is ordinance 18-127 prohibiting sexting by juveniles. Pam, did anyone register to speak to this?
No one is registered.
I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Chief Smith. Now, I, thank you. I know that this was presented two weeks ago at our last meeting, but there may be some people who didn't see the meeting prior, that meeting. Could you just kind of give us the overview of what we're doing here?
Sure. This, this ordinance essentially is going to assist us in investigating offenses such as this that occur with juveniles. Primarily, we're seeing situations in high schools where a juvenile makes a poor decision, and then we, we really are only faced right now with charging them with a criminal offense ranging from a creative misdemeanor to a felony. And if they get charged with a felony, they end up, ending up as a sex offender, sex offender registry. It stays with them for the rest of their life. With this ordinance, it allow us to actually place them, the opportunity at least, to allow them to participate in a, in a diversion program where we hopefully can, can show that their, their actions weren't appropriate, and there's a better way to do things. This is actually a county-wide initiative that every jurisdiction in, in Winnebago County are actually implementing ordinances similar to this, and the diversion program is going to be handled through the Sheriff's Department.
Thank you.
Yes.
I see no one wishing, no one else wishing to talk to this ordinance. Would you please take the roll?
Pack?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Rosie?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next, we have ordinance 18-128, modify parking regulations on Georgia Street, west side from South Park Avenue to 91 feet north of Osborne Avenue. Pam, did anyone register to speak to this pending ordinance?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Would you please take the roll?
Pack?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Rosie?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next is ordinance 18-129, modify parking regulations on West Fourth Avenue and Grove Street. Pam, did anyone sign up?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
I see no one wishing to discuss this ordinance. Would you please take the roll?
Pack?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Rosie?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next is ordinance 18-130, re-adopt municipal code book. Pam?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
I see no one wishing to discuss this pending ordinance. Would you please take the roll?
Pack?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Rosie?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next is ordinance 18-131, approve zone change from industrial in Perrin's I, close Perrin's District to single-family residential dash five, close Perrin's SR dash five, close Perrin's District 16 Villa Park Drive, Villa Park Drive. Plan Commission recommends approval. Pam?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
I see no one wishing to discuss this. Would you please take the roll?
Pack?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Rosie?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Now we have ordinance 18-132, approve zone change from central mixed-use district Perrin's CMU, closed district to central mixed-use district with planned development overlay Perrin's CMU dash PD, close Perrin's 566 North Main Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Pam, did anyone sign up?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
And council member Paul Mary would like to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Burridge? Could you just talk a little bit, we talked earlier today about this change to that property. This is at the Fletcher's Tap, correct?
Correct.
And we talked a little bit about the fencing and the enclosure. Can you just maybe explain a little bit about what Plan Commission came to, or what staff recommended for Plan Commission and council?
Sure. I think the major, the major condition that we had recommended on that for the fence and the enclosure in particular was for the front facade, front facade of that fence, they had recommended that we, the proposal was to have a 10-foot-high fence. The Plan Commission and staff recommendation was to lower that to eight feet and then come up with an alternative design that was more consistent with the, with the look of the, with the look of the building itself, maybe to include some, some brick or any type of material like that on that front facade.
Thank you. And I think you mentioned that the owner might be here tonight.
Sure. Jeremy, I believe, is here.
Oh, hi, Jeremy, yes. Could we? I just had some follow-up questions for you regarding that. So it looks like you guys are working together on dealing with that facade piece, and I guess I just wanted to ask you, I understand you're trying to prevent, like, too much mischief as far as climbing over fences and things like that.
On, on the sides that are around, on the front, I'm not as concerned simply because there's more visibility from the street on that.
Right. And, and I guess my question for you is, have you considered looking at having that be less of a total barrier to the main street and having that a bit more open with
Absolutely.
some other kind of materials?
What I, what I presented to, I sent to planning this week was a design for, or a rough picture of brick on the front and still use very similar wood as to the rest of the fence, but with narrower slats with wider gaps, so it's much more appealing from the streets, so there's more street interaction that way. So you will be on the final, on the final fence on the main street side, there will be much more visibility going into, going to be able to see inside that.
And, and I'm thinking that you're hoping to have that be a more inviting, draw people in kind of thing.
That, I, I, the front fence on that probably isn't the best representation of what that fence will look like.
Sure.
It's similar, the sides and then what wraps around is very similar, but the front is not similar to that. So I guess, I don't know what else to say, but, but the very front, I want people to see because I think we're doing a really good job in there, and I want people to be able to see that and, and be invited in. I don't want it to be walled off in that way, so.
And I guess just my final comment on that is that because we have had some discussions about noise, and I'm assuming you guys are going to want to have some kind of music out there and that kind of thing, that you're going to respect all our ordinances and that, but if we were to have a solid wall in the front, that sound sometimes bounces off that and projects back, so that's, that's really, I just wanted to clarify and ask.
Yeah, no problem. I appreciate the question. Thanks.
Jeremy, I do have one question. I'm kind of going, I'm going from memory, but I recall one of the Plan Commission meetings, or maybe when I stopped in to see what you're doing to the former Justin Nick said, you were going to have vines on some of the fencing.
Yeah.
Was that barley or hops? I don't.
It would, well, we haven't decided yet, but it would be some sort of, we would like to, at some point, grow some vines, because I know hops grows very similar to, very similar to.
Ivy.
Ivy. And, and so we've thought about doing that, just to tie that into the whole part of, to say that it is made out of hops, but we haven't made that 100% decision yet, so.
It's a cool idea.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I don't think so. I see no one wishing to speak to this ordinance any further. Would you please take the roll?
Pack?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Rosie?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
We have some new ordinances, most of which we will not be taking action on tonight, but the first we will, and that's ordinance 18-133, approve closure of Oregon Street from West Sixth Avenue to West 16th Avenue and intersections on West Ninth Avenue, Oregon Street, and West South Park Avenue, and Oregon Street. Staff does recommend waiving the rules and adopting on the first reading. Pam, is there anyone that wanted to speak to this?
No one is registered.
So I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
To suspend the rules.
To suspend the rules.
I would move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Discussion? Would you please take the roll?
Pack?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Rosie?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Now we have the original ordinance 18-133. I would like a motion in a second from the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Paul Mary?
Mr. Ravi or Mr. Cody?
Yes.
So it's my understanding there have been a number of correspondence sent out to abutting property owners on this closure, neighborhood meetings, I think, is what they're called?
Yes, the, the first business owners' meeting was held today at 12:30, I believe it was today, here in City Hall. So there have been notices sent out regarding a weekly business owner update meeting if they want to come in and meet with staff and our contractor to get updates.
And, and so the seven days notice here is to us by the contractor, but then would we also, I know there's a place where people can sign up to get updates, like an email blast, right?
Yeah. The seven-day notice is actually requiring signage to be put up out on the street. It's not actually putting, you know, sending out notices. It's literally putting a sign up on the street that says, hey, this part of the street's going to close in seven days, or, you know, give the date that it's going to close.
Will we have both lanes closed at any given time? At this, will we have both directional lanes closed at?
On Oregon Street, yes.
Okay.
You know, there, it will need to be completely closed in order to do the reconstruction, you know, access to the front doors of the businesses will be maintained, you know, through the sidewalk, and when they're doing sidewalk work, you know, they'll have to get a little creative in order to maintain that front door access, but they are required to maintain, maintain access to all the businesses at all times.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Pansky?
I did notice that the signs were up already. So a concern that came out of a meeting I was at last night was where does the public go to get updates regarding closures when, and I, I believe there was some sort of dashboard or something that we could send updates, or they could subscribe to updates. Where, where does?
Yes, there, there are a couple of different ways. One is the weekly construction activity and traffic restrictions, email blast that goes out from our office. That is in one of the email subscriptions that you can sign up for by going to the Department of Public Works homepage, and then there is a link for email distribution lists. If you click on that, the first one in the list should be for the traffic restrictions and construction updates, and then down that list, there's a list of all the projects that have mailing lists set up for them. Oregon Street is contract 1805, so you'd want to click on the subscribe. The system will send you a blank email, which you need to reply to within five days. Then the system will confirm that you are indeed registered after you're receiving that second email.
And anyone can subscribe to this at any time, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Subscribe now to get the updates.
Yep. You, you can subscribe at any time to get those weekly updates from our division staff.
Okay. And then the only other clarification is that it looks like for two weeks over EAA, it'll be somewhat open?
Um, yeah. Do you remember the windows particular?
I, I believe that we have it set up that they cannot close Ninth Avenue and South Park crossing Oregon during EAA. Those, those two streets.
Just those major intersections.
Those major intersections have to be open to cross Oregon Street at that point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Paul Mary?
I'm sorry, I just want to clarify that. So I'm reading in the staff memo that it says the timeframe was limited to two consecutive weeks to minimize the impact to the traveling public, but are you saying that's only during EAA, or is that
No.
weeks at a maximum?
The, the intersection at Ninth and Oregon can only be closed to east-west traffic for a maximum of two consecutive weeks, and it cannot be during EAA. And the same thing with the intersection at South Park. It can only be closed to east-west traffic for a maximum of two consecutive weeks, and that also cannot be during EAA. Yes, and, thank you, Steve. And they cannot be closed at the same time.
Okay.
And the, the, Ninth and South Park cannot be closed at the same time, and the three major intersections, Sixth Avenue, Ninth Avenue, and South Park Avenue, two of those three must be open at all times.
Very good. Thank you.
Would you please take the roll?
Pack?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Rosie?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next is ordinance 18-134, approve closure of Otter Avenue from State Street to Broad Street, Washington Avenue from North Main Street to Broad Street, Seabee Avenue at the intersection of Court Street, Wagu Avenue at the intersection of Court Street, and modify the truck routes to include Irving Avenue from North Main Street to Bowen Street. And there will be no formal action taken on this ordinance tonight, but Pam, has anyone signed up to speak to it?
No one is registered.
Councilmember Pansky?
James, just kind of going back to our previous conversation about the updates on construction, do you have the number for this one as well?
This is contract 1804.
1804. Can they sign up for more than one?
You can sign up for as many of them as you want. In fact, I am signed up on every single one so that I receive all the updates every week.
Good, thank you.
So, yes, you can be on all of them if you'd like.
Next is ordinance 18-135, approve zone change from two-flat residential dash 10 district with planned development overlay and central mixed-use district to central mixed-use district with planned development overlay, 576 through 582 North Main Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Pam, did anyone sign up for this?
No one is registered.
All right, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
No.
That's right. Moving on to ordinance 18-136, amend chapter 30 zoning ordinance to delete section 30-241 in Perrin's D, close Perrin's, Perrin's three, close Perrin's, Perrin's D, close Perrin's, section 30-241 Perrin's E, close Perrin's, Perrin's three, close Perrin's, Perrin's D, close Perrin's, and section 30-241 Perrin's F, close Perrin's, Perrin's two, close Perrin's, Perrin's C, close Perrin's. Regarding metal roofs prohibited and create section 30-241 Perrin G, close Perrin's, to permit standing seam metal roofing in single and two-family residential applications, Plan Commission recommends approval.
Could you repeat that, please?
No. Just read it, read it, read it. I need a drink of water after that one, all these Perrin's. Councilmember Paul Mary?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would just like to commend planning staff and the Plan Commission and those citizens that brought this item forward. There was a lot of work that went into this. I followed this very closely, and it is an example of where you can fight City Hall. You can get things changed. So thanks to all those people that participated, and thank you, staff, for coming up with a, a very workable solution.
All right, next is resolution 18-137, which was, which was drawn by the applicant. We'll move on to new resolutions. The first is resolution 18-138, approve agreement with Oshkosh Saturday Farmers Market, Inc. Pam, did anyone register to speak to this?
Yes, Jane Dottery, 11 Tanah Court.
Yes, I'd like to say that I consider an event to be something special that happens maybe once a year for a day, for a weekend, for a few days. It could be something every five or 10 years. It's an event. On the other hand, the Farmers Market takes place during the summer every Saturday morning down on Main Street in Oshkosh, and then during July, August, September, October, it also takes place at South Park, and then continuing on for the winter months, it's indoors at Merrill Middle School. So I consider that to be more of a city or a community activity. It's an activity because it's ongoing, recurring, and it's regularly scheduled. So I consider that to be something far different than an event, which is a special occasion. Then concerning the Farmers Market, that has provided a platform, an environment for community conversation, dialogue, and multicultural inclusion. It's a city activity where we can come together. Also, I would say that the Farmers Market, over time, has created a brand. It's become very popular and very, has a very positive identity, almost a brand. It puts a brand on Oshkosh. It puts Oshkosh on the map as a place where people can come to live, work, play, and shop. So I urge you, and I, I'm glad that a solution has already been achieved, because I had several suggestions on how to resolve that, but I want to impress the point I'm making, that it is a community activity where the community can come together and have conversation with each other. And so with that being said, in the TV Weekly magazine, there's a column listed for jeers and cheers. So I would like to give a cheer out to the council for coming to a solution. That's it. One more, one more thing, I guess, on behalf of the Stevens Park Neighborhood Association, that's our contribution to the city's green space. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam?
Michael Cooney, 5391 County Roadcase.
I think she told you everything you need to know about Farmers Market. I'm Michael Cooney. I'm the board chair for the Farmers Market, and we, I'm here really to say thank you to the council for the city staff for coming up with truly a creative and workable solution for us. It takes care of our problems. I think it takes care of the city's issues, and I'm just here to say thank you, and if the council has any questions regarding the Farmers Market or any of the aspects of our agreement, I'm here to answer it. Other than that, I won't take any more of your time.
Thank you. Pam?
No further individuals are registered.
I will bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
I see no one wishing to speak. Councilmember Paul Mary?
Again, I just want to thank staff, Mr. Maurer, Mr. Fitzpatrick, the folks from Farmers Market for working very hard on coming to an agreement on this, and I just, again, would like to give some compliments, because I know that that took a lot of work.
I see no other lights lighting up, so would you please take the roll?
Pack?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Rosie?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next, we have resolution 18-139, accept joint marketing effort in Perrin's JEM, close Perrin's, grant and amend 2018 museum budget. Pam, did anyone sign up?
No one is registered.
I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, just one comment on this for people who maybe do not know what a JEM grant, JEM grant is, that is issued by the Department of Tourism to entities, in this case, a museum. The Pain had it a few years ago for the dressing Downton, but it's a grant for those, I'll say, organizations that through a program say, organizations that through a program generate a significant amount of tourism traffic into their communities. So, hats off to the museum staff, staff for lending this grant. There are no other lights, so would you please take the roll?
Excuse me, Pack.
Aye.
Pal Mary.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried Seven.
Next, we have resolution eighteen dash one eighty, one forty, from which I have to accuse myself, because I am an Evergreen Village Board member. I will turn the gavel and my chair and my computer off to Deputy Mayor Herman. If you have problems, ask Jacob. There'll be no, no problems. Okay.
We're on number twenty-seven, resolution eighteen dash one four zero. Instead of asking the audience first if they want to come forward, we're going to bring it forward to the council and then have presentations by the four applicants. We have an approval of a combination Class B licenses for the City of Oshkosh in front of the council tonight. So, I would ask for a motion to bring the resolution forward.
So moved.
Second.
I'll just take the, we'll go forward now. As I said, we have two liquor licenses currently available to be issued out to applicants to the City of Oshkosh. And we have a third liquor license that currently is assigned to the Marion Road District on the waterfront. If council wishes to make that decision toward that, we can do that tonight. Otherwise, we currently have two available liquor licenses. We have four applicants. And per our policy, we've asked the applicants, they've applied for the liquor licenses, and we've asked them to come forward to do a presentation to the city council, and which time we'll discuss after that. So, what I'll do is I'll ask a representative from each one of the four applicants to come forward, let them give their presentation, and then if council has any questions after the presentation to that particular applicant, we can do it that way. Everybody's okay with that? Okay. So, we'll just go in order. Carmel Chris, Chandra, I think, is out there.
Hi. Okay, so, I wasn't really sure, because I don't listen to, I don't read my mail and, you know, whatever. So, I wasn't really sure exactly why I was being invited here. But I know I've exchanged a number of messages with Mark. I, okay, craziest thing you ever, ever will hear is I cannot sell wine and serve wine, okay? I know, ridiculous, right? So, what happens is because of the way my business is laid out, I need to be able to serve it, but the business next to it needs to be able to sell it for gift baskets. So, in order to do that, I've been told I have to have a full liquor license, which is about the most ridiculous thing on earth, because I don't need hard liquor. I just need to be able to serve and sell, okay? And so, I tried to figure out ways around it. There's no ways around it unless I put walls back up in my business, which, I mean, if any of you don't know, I've waited for years to tear those walls down. So, I'm not going to do that. I would love for a different option for this, because I don't want to take a liquor license from any of the other three. So, if, you know, I mean, by all means, I feel like they should have it. I'm not going to keep the Howard from having alcohol. They got to have, I'm not going to a wedding at the Howard if there's no alcohol, you know? So, and I already have a space at Evergreen, and I wouldn't mind an old-fashioned there on occasion. So, you know, and, I don't know, Fletcher, I thought he got away with some great idea with a door, but apparently not. So, I, I can't say that I would want the liquor license over any, I'm not going to be creating any jobs. I'm not going to be doing anything. I just have a headache when it comes to basket-making season, because I can't do this alcohol. With my proximity to the hotel, it'd be nice if they could come and just get a bottle of wine or whatever. I guess I have, you know, the best ice cream in the state of Wisconsin. If I could throw a shot of, you know, whatever, and, you know, a shake or something, maybe, but that wasn't even the plan. So, I am receptive. Although, why can't the Howard get the three hundred seat? And Evergreen, for that matter, has to have at least three hundred seats in that place. I don't get that. So, I just problem-solved everything for you guys. So, we can go. But if it, if it comes down to that, I'm not, I'm not pulling, I'm not going to try and compete for a liquor license and keep one of these three from getting it. That's just, you know, I just need to put a bottle of wine in a basket on occasion, or sell a bottle of wine, or whatever. That's all I need it for. And when I originally sent Mark my email, I think there were three liquor licenses open, and as far as I knew, there was no one on the waiting list. And I'm like, I really would like to be able to, you know, provide these gift baskets. And I mean, I do hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of gift baskets at Christmas. And it just, you know, would be nice to be like, let's throw a bottle of wine in with that cheese and crackers and caramel corn. So, I am receptive to any ideas but putting the walls back up. But if it comes down to a vote between me or one of those three, I'm withdrawing. I would really rather have, like I said, I'm not going to a wedding, the Howard, if I can't have a drink. So, that's my two cents. Do you guys have any questions?
I, yes.
Go ahead.
Would you be comfortable waiting until Christmas if something should come along? You know, we kind of go through this process in June and July. If something opens up, would you be comfortable waiting until, like, when do you start putting baskets together for the Christmas season?
Well, I honestly want to be able to offer, in the gift shop, the same wine we serve, you know, and maybe, you know, some beer that is made in Wisconsin. That's it. But no, I don't, I don't need it today. I would like it by fourth quarter, you know, it doesn't-
You're flexible.
Again, I'm not going to take it from one of these three. So, I mean, how does a bar function without a liquor license, you know? So, it'd be like taking my cookie license from me or something. So, I'm not going to try and pull his, you know, like-
He might show up if he's bad.
That's, to me, I am wasting your time here, because you need to give it to those three and tell Carmel Chris to take a hike, you know? It's, it's that easy.
You're wonderful, thank you.
But, you know, well, Oshkosh comes first to me, if you guys don't know, but-
Any other questions by councilmembers? Thank you.
This is, this is more directed to staff. No work with me. I'm not jumping ahead on the agenda. But there is a liquor license currently held in abeyance by Robin's Restaurant, correct?
Rob, there is a liquor license that, Rob, it's, I don't know what you mean by held in abeyance.
Well, it basically-
There is a liquor license at Robin's.
There that we've basically held open, because the businesses trying to be sold and everything. But apparently, later on on the agenda, Robin's Restaurant is going away, based on a particular development. Will that license be coming back in? I mean, in essence, will that license, because the, the building that that license is for is no longer around. So, will that license be basically returned to the city?
You may recall, a couple meetings ago, we discussed about bringing back inactive liquor licenses for consideration, to really bring them back, to have them in a pool available so that the council could, could award those and have a more flexible system where it's not just locked into a single location, but it's available for, for the general public. We're going to be bringing that back. Ms. Huber's been busy with the election, so we're going to be bringing that back between the election and the end of the licensing year, which is June. So, we'll be bringing those back.
All right, because, because I think this is the type of case where we really should be bringing these licenses back into the city as quickly as possible to address situations. Because in this situation, well, yes, these businesses have said to us, we're trying to sell our business. We need this liquor license to do it and everything else. We've now got, actually, well, in this instance, four businesses that are looking for a liquor license. We've only got the ability to possibly give three. And we've got people that are sitting on liquor licenses and not using them. So, I, okay.
Yeah, we have multiple licenses that-
Okay. Then I think that we should be addressing that issue sooner rather than later.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. A representative from Evergreen Retirement Community, please.
I was actually trying to figure out how it makes Chandra's old-fashioned. And I think I have a presentation, and I did provide a handout to members of the council with correction. But my name is Ken Arneson. I'm the president and CEO at Evergreen. And I want to thank members of the Oshkosh Common Council for an opportunity to present on our request for a Class B license. We have had a Class A license for a number of years, but our population does not go to pub houses. Old Fashioneds, Manhampins, Martinis, those are the things they desire. And it's been an exciting time for us at Evergreen, as we near the end of a twenty-four million dollar campus renovation, an expansion project that began in two thousand and thirteen, and think God is expected to finish in May. But Pub sixty-seven is key to the success of this project and ongoing efforts to redefine how people age and making Oshkosh a destination for retirement. Some additional facts I wanted to provide to you about Evergreen and our economic impact. We've been a part of this community since nineteen sixty-seven. We serve three hundred-plus residents on our campus, but we serve hundreds more in the community who also come in our campus and utilize it. We currently have three hundred and fifteen employees or two hundred and ten FTEs, with plans to add two additional FTEs with Pub sixty-seven. Annual revenues in nineteen point one million and a payroll of seven point five million. And as a nonprofit, Evergreen does pay taxes. In your handout, you had the twenty-six nine fifty-four. That's Evergreen's portion towards our Evergreen Villages. Those currently are a hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. In addition, when special assessments come, as they did along Westfield Street, which we were blamed for a lot of that work, we felt we needed to pay our part, which was over three hundred thousand dollars. We are not afraid to pay our part to support the community. And Evergreen does provide additional jobs annually outside of our campus to contractors, suppliers, and others. On an annual basis with campus improvements, we have expenditures between two hundred and four hundred thousand dollars. And the idea of innovation, and this whole idea of the pub, a similar idea is when we built our fitness and aquatic center in two thousand and four, and people questioned us, why do old people need swimming pools? And you know what we're criticized for today? We built them too small. And what's been key to the success at Evergreen was opening the pools to the community. In two thousand and seventeen, we recorded close to eleven thousand visits from members of the community that come and use our pools. And here's what we found out. There's a population in this community. They want to be engaged. But the challenges sometimes are physical. It's things like light, noise, distance. But more important are those social type of challenges they face, with the idea of wanting to feel comfortable with where they are going to exercise. And in many cases, it also is with being entertained. If you look, you can see the development. We currently have in our central part of our campus, which we liken to the central city of Oshkosh, where we have Pub sixty-seven. It is a key draw. Right across from it, you can enjoy Wii bowling. I think right now, we have a half a dozen bowling teams, and they are very competitive bowlers. We're putting in Ski Ball, bar-type shuffleboard, darts, video games Miss Pac-Man, and Pac-Man are making a comeback. We have outdoor venues for individuals to enjoy their drinks. And with the remodel of our restaurant in the pub, I'm sorry, that area will seat a hundred individuals. But in addition with our Class B, we have performances in our Performing Arts Center. We tonight had our, we bring the Food Channel to you live with demonstration cooking. Believe it or not, we have weddings and receptions. And similar with our population, they would like their old-fashioned. And the idea of bars and pubs in senior living is not new. Two examples in this state are St. John's on the lake, which you'll see if you go to the next one, in Milwaukee. And in Markort Village, which is in Watertown, Wisconsin, The Crave, which is a popular destination in the community. So, what we believe our reasons to grant is a Class B license is you are assisting a business in growing, which has a proven result in this community for over fifty years, and is positioning ourselves for the future generation. Baby boomers and others want to age differently. We believe a key, we know a key to attracting people to the campus, and with our recent apartments, we're seeing this, is the pub. We actually have underestimated the impact of the pub. People were disappointed. We are not open this Saturday for St. Patty's Day. But we've been attracting people from Milwaukee, Madison, out of state, from Illinois, Texas, Michigan, Florida. These are individuals who are moving to Oshkosh and this community because of what we are doing. And as the city develops, Oshkosh have, having a resource such as Evergreen will help those organizations, because those people are looking for places to bring their parents. But what is most important is the idea that people want to be independent regardless of their age. And the city has an opportunity to help enhance the quality of lives for people as they age. What I've learned is as people age, the tendency is their world gets smaller. Our focus has been, how do we keep the world as large as possible? The idea of meeting your friends for a night out at your local establishment, inviting your family or friends, enjoying a performance, doesn't stop because of your age. It just looks different. And that's what we want to provide. And we believe in supporting Evergreen and the granting of a Class B license. You're going to help continue to improve the quality of life, not only for our residents, for the larger community. I know I'm aging, and I know what I'm expecting. So, I hope you will support us, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Click in.
Yep. Ms. Arneson, I just have a question about that. So, is the intent that Pub sixty-seven is not just for residents of Evergreen, but also friends and family? Or is it open to the public? And how does that work?
Well, right now, our restaurant, our cafe is open to the public. We have numerous people who come in. Pub sixty-seven is the same. What we believe is going to be our primary audience are individuals, for example, who come for learning and retirement right now through the UW Oshkosh Program. We, our residents have lots of friends, lots of family. But if we have individuals from the community who want to sop in, we're not going to turn them away. You know, the idea of Evergreen is to make it welcoming. Believe it or not, the more we invite the community in, the less we look like an old folks' home, which is really what people want. So, if you want to come and have a handmade old-fashioned, you're more than welcome to come down.
And then I just wanted to clarify, and I guess, maybe, ask you about, you mentioned the special assessments, the three hundred and two thousand. And that comes through that pilot, right? The payment in lieu of taxes?
No.
In part? Or, help me understand that.
No, what the three hundred and two thousand was, is when work was done on Westfield Street last year for reconstruction, that was Evergreen's portion. We have indicated to the city with our project, we are open to talking about a pilot. As you see with our village, you know, we believe, even as a nonprofit, you know, we want to do our part to support the community, because the community supports us. Part of what I wanted to provide is we, we do pay property taxes right now.
Sure.
And sales tax, and a number of other fees.
Well, I don't know if you're the first organization, but you're the only one that I know of, at least in recent history and currently, who has volunteered to recognize the services that are used by the nonprofit end of it, and to be willing to pay property or payments in lieu of taxes.
Yep, yep, we are. We're very open to that.
Any other questions from the council? Otherwise, thank you.
Yep.
Fletcher's Local Tap House, Jeremy, I know you're still here.
So, I didn't do a presentation. I just had, I wrote up something that I just kind of want to read off.
want to read off, and I wanted to write it because I didn't want to miss a few things. So if I don't make direct eye contact, it's because I'm reading, and so I'll just get started. And it's hard to follow up that, you know, both of them.
Senior smoothies are hard to give up, right?
Thank you for taking the time to consider my applications for a liquor license for Fletcher's Local Tap House at 566 North Main. I moved from Madison to Oshkosh almost 11 years ago to open the Varsity Club at 570 North Main. This was two years before the Main Street was renovated. In those 10 years, I have had a front row view as to the transformation of our downtown. Many older rundown buildings have been transformed, and there's a renewed interest in downtown, not just by our own residents, but by others that come to visit our community. In June of 2012, I was given the opportunity to purchase 570 North Main Street, where the Varsity Club is located. I wouldn't have taken that chance if I hadn't seen all the positive changes occurring. In October of 2014, Al Blesser from Prox Tax approached me and asked if I was interested in purchasing 566 North Main Street. He indicated that he would be looking to sell the building and move his business the following summer of 2015. We agreed to discuss this more in May of 2015. That winter and spring, I would stop in at Prox Tax and look around. The more time I spent in that building, I started to see the potential of the building and the property that surrounds it. In January of 2016, I purchased the property. My intention from the beginning was to open another bar tavern with a large outdoor patio. I was going to put that project off three to four years, though, possibly start the project in 2019 or 2020. The delay of three or four years ended up being seven months. The more time that I spent in the building, the more I knew that I had to start as soon as possible. I worked with local architect and, pardon me, I worked with local architect and engineering firm T. Carrolls and Associates to design a plan, West Point Bank to help with construction financing, and spent every dollar that I had saved over eight years of business to get Fletcher's ready to open. Through this construction, I waited to see if the liquor license would become available. Unfortunately, none were available at that time. At this point, I worked with Angela Jaikle, Deputy City Clerk, to come up with another solution to help Fletcher's get on its feet and open for business. Since the Varsity Club and Fletcher's are right next to each other, we were able to come up with a plan in which we could share one license between the two properties. The solution enabled me to be able to open the doors to the public and have them appreciate the work that we had done to the building. As of right now, we are working on a large upscale outdoor patio attached to Fletcher's as well. My intentions were always to seek a separate liquor license for Fletcher's. The following reasons are, that I believe are granting a separate liquor license to Fletcher's is beneficial not only to myself, but to the community. Number one, I believe that the value of the two properties, each having their own liquor license, is higher rather than the two properties sharing one liquor license. Number two, I would like to build a full-service kitchen at Fletcher's in the next two to three years. A new kitchen expansion would allow me to hire a minimum of five new staff members. A separate liquor license would increase the value of the property, enable me to get better financing to enable this expansion. Number three, while I have no intention of selling for a very long time, if the need arose that I would need to sell one or both of the properties, it would be very difficult to find a buyer that could take on such a massive expense of both properties. This could possibly lead to the property languishing for sale for some time, or the properties would have to be split, and one would function with the liquor license and the other would sit vacant. The way that Fletcher's has been, and number four, the way that Fletcher's has been renovated and constructed, I think it will stay in its current use for a very long time. No expense has been spared. If granted a liquor license, it will continue to be a source of revenue for the city of Oshkosh. From employment, sales tax, income tax, and fees paid directly to the city, this will be an investment in the future by the city of Oshkosh. And number five, a separate liquor license would lead to additional sales tax collected from amusement devices. This income would equate to approximately $500 a month in sales tax collected. This is in addition to the sales tax already currently collected. Finally, I took on this, I took on this project with enthusiasm and belief in the future and success of downtown Oshkosh. I could have waited for a liquor, until a liquor license was available, but instead dove headfirst into the project. My hope is that the city council sees this commitment and take that into account when they're making their decision. Other than that, I'm not sure. I am also, after hearing Caramel Crisp, I mean, am I in desperate need absolutely of right now of needing one? Not right now, and I mean, it's not a make or break, but it's something that, if something was to happen to me, I would be afraid that, you know, the property would sit there, and it would be very, very difficult to find, you know, a buyer for that. Also, that while I am able to share my liquor license, these are two buildings and two properties, and I think each individual one would operate best with each having their own liquor license. But if one was available third quarter or something like that, and you guys saw a fit, I would gladly, you know, look at one at that point as well, because it's not quite affecting my business right now, I'm just thinking long-term down the road as well, so.
Okay. Any questions from council members? Thank you very much. Last but not least, the Howard.
He's just handing out a little sheet that we prepared for you, but to introduce myself, my name is Carrie Sharp. I am one of the owners of the building at 405 Washington Avenue, which was formerly known as the Eagles Club, but will be reopening later this year as the Howard. With me tonight, I brought my sister Jenna Goleman, who is a co-owner on the project with me. I also have our events manager, Michelle Rector, and our culinary manager, Elizabeth Redman, and then I also brought my mom, because she's off. So I just wanted to give you a little background on the project. I'm sure everybody here is familiar with the building. It's been beloved in our community for many years. It originally opened in 1928 and was the home of the Fraternal Order of the Eagles until 2002, when they sold the building due to declining membership and the increased costs of maintaining the building. Since that time, it was the electric lounge for a while, and then it also housed the Oshkosh East, was an alternative high school for a period of time, but for the last five years or so, it's really been pretty much not used at all, other than briefly the YMCA downtown was using it for some fitness classes while they were doing renovations this past summer. In terms of our involvement, we purchased the property back in April of last year, but really, we took over a year and a half to consider the project. My sister and I were both born and raised in Oshkosh and have a deep love for our city, and we really wanted to help build on the revitalization efforts downtown and on Washington Avenue. And this project was something that just was kind of sitting there waiting to be revitalized. So our goal was to bring the building back, to do a full historic renovation, and really bring the back, the building back to its former glory and for use for the entire community. This property also was a goal of Imagine Oshkosh for revitalization, and it was a challenge that we were happy and excited to take on. We also purchased five, some of the adjacent properties, five residential and the service station that was next door. We raised those properties to provide additional parking, including handicap parking, which the building never had, and also some beautifully landscaped spaces, which we think will really help revitalize the neighborhood. We also went through the process of adding this building to the state and national historic register, which was quite a undertaking, and I'm happy to say that they've both have been accepted, so it's now on the state and national registry. And just in general, we've gotten just tons of positive feedback about this project. I have to say, we really are just sort of overwhelmed by how much support and enthusiasm we've been hearing from the community, and we're really excited for our opening later this year. So about what's going on inside, on the first floor, and some of you are probably familiar with the inside of the building as well, we're going to be opening a cafe that's going to be serving juice, coffee, and kind of healthy food, and that portion will not need a liquor license. However, we also have the ballroom, which has the capacity of about 450, which will be hammered out for sure once we have our final building inspections, but right now it's about 450. We will be having lots of weddings, private events. I think as of right now, we have over 20 weddings booked starting in July of this year, as well as some Howard-sponsored events that will be open to the public to purchase tickets. Some of those examples are dinner theater, concerts, we are hoping to do a Christmas market, so lots of different offerings for the community. Upstairs, we also have what we like to call the Great Hall, that beautiful room with the wood beams, and that space will also have some private events, but also some Howard-sponsored events such as wine dinners and chef dinners. And then downstairs, of course, people have very fond memories of the bowling alley, and we are keeping the bowling alley down there. It's 10 lanes, we're doing a complete gut remodel of it, and it's going to be sort of a boutique-style bowling alley, which will be really unique for the community at large beyond just Oshkosh. It's going to be sort of a more upscale bowling that'll have craft cocktails, wine and beer, and just sort of a different vibe than a normal bowling alley. Of course, this building did have a liquor license for many years, and to be perfectly honest, I'm not really sure when the building lost its liquor license, but of course, it no longer has one. We believe this project will have a positive economic impact on Oshkosh. At the building's opening, we anticipate about 30 FTEs with room for growth. We are, it's a little hard to say exactly how many staff we're going to need at this point, because we don't know how many events we're going to be doing, so that could be a lot of part-time employees, so we think that it'll be, it'll be growing over the years. Also, it just, it fits kind of a unique market with the ballroom. We have, we can seat over 350 people for weddings, and this already is a popular wedding venue. People have been getting married there for decades. I hear lots of stories of people who got married there, their parents got married there, and like I said, we already have 20 weddings booked starting in July of this year, so we're really excited about that. And we anticipate that each wedding can bring about $500,000 of revenue to the local Oshkosh I think our unique combination of the cafe, the bowling alley, and the event spaces will really attract people not only from Oshkosh, but from surrounding areas, because there really is nothing else like this in Fond du Lac, or Appleton, or Nina, or anywhere really nearby. And just in general, this, I think the liquor license will be used six to seven days a week, so we really will be fully utilizing the liquor license, and we anticipate the renovations will be done in June. Like I said, we have weddings starting in July, and the coffee, the coffee cafe and the bowling alley bar will be opening in, tentatively in September. And any questions?
Councilmember Palmyrie.
So this sounds fabulous. I did get the chance to go to one of the last blues concerts in the Great Hall. Fabulous building before it kind of shuttered, so it's exciting to see new life coming. My question is, if the, okay, if the first-floor cafe does not require liquor license, and the second-floor ballroom is where the weddings will be, and that's over 300 seats, does this fall into that category of being eligible for the 300-seat license?
Okay. As long as we have open licenses, we're unable to issue an above quota license.
I see. So if we did end up being maxed out and those are all used, then that applies, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And then the other question is, if the liquor license would be utilized six to seven days a week, are you anticipating that you'll have that many weddings or events in the ballroom, like six to seven days a week?
No, the bowling alley bar will be open.
Oh, the bowling, okay, I apologize.
Yeah, so there's a full bar in the bowling alley. So that really will be open, you know, we're right now planning to be closed on Mondays, just to have a day off, but every other day, we're going to be open.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other question? Go ahead.
So that one qualify for the 300 one?
Right now.
Yeah, right now. So the bowling alley to be operational, most bowling alleys have liquor, so that would be pretty important to you guys.
Yes, yeah, it's very important to our, I mean, we specifically are trying to set this apart as sort of a more upscale bowling alley, and we want to have like craft cocktails and, you know, a little bit different offerings than just, you know, beer.
Thank you. Normally, when we have a resolution, we have citizen input. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to speak on this? Did anybody sign up?
I have no one registered.
Okay, no one registered, so it's already been brought forward to council. Before we get into discussions, I guess I'm going to let the clerk just kind of refresh everybody's memory. We have two licenses available with an option of a third to issue out tonight.
That is correct.
Okay.
You have two open licenses, the Marion Road, you have the option of issuing that tonight or holding off and doing that at a later date.
Everybody clear on that? Okay. Councilmember Peck.
Four excellent opportunities and proposals that, you know, would all deem ready for, would be benefit from the licenses. Shonda, your love of Oshkosh is appreciated, and I can tell you this, that your offer is wonderful. And so what I would do is, at this point, I would like to, and I would go to Ms. Hubrig for what we're looking at, is I would like to offer the three licenses to Evergreen, to Fletcher's, and the Howard. Is that, would we do that through an amendment, or?
Can we have to question first on everything?
Yes, well, first we'll have to have this.
Okay.
Discussion first. We have to, we can award the two liquor licenses, and then we have to either amend the resolution to pull the license that is dedicated to the Marion Road. So first of all, before we get into a lot of discussion, is there any yes right away? Do you want to issue the two available licenses, or do you want to have discussion first and then make a decision as a council? Or is there one that?
Discussion first.
Discussion doesn't hurt, obviously.
No, it doesn't. So let's start with discussion, and Jake, you're first.
My personal opinion on it is Fletcher's said that they share one liquor license between the two, and for the short time being, they're not going to lose any revenue if they continue to do that. It's more of a security blanket if something would happen in the future, and the other three could get the, if we use three of them, we could just use all three on the other ones, because all of them will lose revenue or lose potential events if we don't issue one of them to them. So then all four businesses could maintain their plan currently.
Nick?
Okay.
Can live with that.
Councilmember Palmyrie.
Oh, no, I was...
Nope, okay. Any other comments by council members? Debbie Allison Osby, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Herman. I guess I was more inclined to go with what Counselor Peck had originally said, and the reason being is, and I appreciate Shonda also, looking at the best interests of the other three applicants, but, you know, one of the things we talk about is economic development and the investment, and although Fletcher's is borrowing one from the existing business, it's still an investment in economic development, which is something that this council and the community has talked about quite a bit. Obviously, he's put a lot of thought and time into that, where a lot of times we see other folks, you know, again, sitting on their liquor licenses when nothing's happening at all. So, you know, I would prefer to see Evergreen, Fletcher's, and the Howard all receive liquor licenses this evening.
Okay. Well, since I'm chairing, I'll let Mr. Councilmember Peck go.
I've already made, said what I've wanted to say is, and I think that I, I think it should be Evergreen, Fletcher's, and the Howard, and that, as I indicated earlier, we address these open licenses as soon as possible and give Ms. Anderson the opportunity to come back when we have one of those.
Okay. Councilmember Palmyrie.
A technical question for staff, either Pam or Lynn. Does the state allow us to transfer a, an unused or an inactive liquor license that's being held on the basis of another applicant? Are there, is there wiggle room with this that, for example, the Robins or one of the others, while it's part of the quota, it's not being used? Are those transferable or not between entities?
You would have to either non-renew the license or revoke it, which requires a hearing, and then it would be an open license, and otherwise, the person who holds the license can file paperwork and transfer it.
They can.
Yeah.
So in other words, one of these entities, if they weren't granted something, could then approach them for that purpose privately?
They have to come back to council in every case.
Right, I understand, but I mean, if they could craft something between them and then apply through council.
We don't want to create the perception that there's a secondary market for liquor licenses.
You have to be careful, because you don't want to be the appearance of selling licenses.
Right, I understand, but if it's...
Right, I understand, but if it's transferable technically and on the up and up, it could be.
Generally, they get transferred to the same, at the same location.
I see. Yep, okay. Thank you. That, just, just needed to get a technical question answered.
Okay. I support issuing the, the two initial liquor licenses that are available to Evergreen and to the Howard and then bring it back to council to determine if we want to issue the third liquor license, which is reserved for the Marion Road. And I guess I, a question I have to Mr. Davis, any interest in anything developing in the very near future that if we did decide to issue the third license, that we could be hurting some future economic development in the riverfront?
I'm sure Mr. Dumke, who has the option on the last lot along the river, is anticipating having a liquor license available because we've reserved it up to this point. His option expires at the end of this year. I don't believe I have anything immediate being presented. He's still working on what he can put together on that site, but he's always assumed he'd have a liquor license available.
Okay. Do you know, Mr. Davis, how many years that license has been reserved for the Marion Road area?
No, I don't.
It precedes me, so it's at least ten years old and it probably dates back to about 2006, I'm going to guess.
Okay. And, and in the earlier discussions, there, you know, there's been some talk of unused liquor licenses. There's no guarantee that those licenses, when the renewal time comes up, will be available under our current policy or procedure, correct?
The policy has been that the inactive licenses come back to council, but council has been allowing extensions. If you cease allowing extensions, then you're going to have a pool of liquor licenses. And I think that's the logic that council seemed to buy into. We don't have to change the policy, we just have to change the, the process, practice it. But this can be done. I've seen it work in other communities and I really think it would, it would be successful if we did that because eventually we'll need one for Marion Road. And the reason we put this in the mix is to really, I guess, lead by example because these other licenses, I know people are worried about the licenses, if they, if they surrender the license or if we revoke it, that they're going to be left without a license. But the reality is, I've seen it work very well where if you have a pool of licenses, it makes it more available, more flexible for the whole community. So, you know, the council is kicking around the different options and I, what I'm hearing is the council wants to have some flexibility to help everybody because you see the value in all of these and that's, and I think that's what we're trying to do with bringing these back to you eventually.
Okay. Councilmember Pansky.
Just a question kind of regarding what Deputy Mayor Herman was going after. We could reinstate a liquor license for Marion Road at a later time, correct?
Absolutely.
We're not pulling it forever. We can designate one when one comes available.
We have done this in the last ten years, at least once I recall that we did some shifting around and then reallocated an unused license because there were some short-term issues that we needed to work through. And a lot of it's trust. It's just people trusting us that we would do the right thing and then when it worked out, it reinforced that, the trust that, doing it. And so there, we can be flexible if everybody works with us. I think the fact that when you hear Mr. West's testimony regarding the flexibility that Angela and the clerk's office worked with them, I've empowered employees in the clerk's office to look for those solutions. The Eagles Club, the history of it was, they had a regular license, but Olive Garden needed to, needed a license back then. So we shifted it over to Olive Garden and then suddenly all our licenses were allocated. Then we had a three hundred seat magically, oh, Eagles Club is a, Eagles Club has three hundred seats, did you know that? Well, then they came back to us and we created a license. And it's that creativity working within the law. I'd love to find a way to get around it for Shonda because it does seem an underutilization of a liquor license, but it's a legitimate business use. That's the only way she's going to be able to use it is with a liquor license. And, you know, in some cases, we can be real creative with Mr. West, but we're limited in what we do for Carmel Crisp. We try to work every time to figure out a, a creative way to keep everybody thriving with these liquor licenses.
Well, with that being said then, I, I would be in favor of Evergreen, Fletcher's and the Howard. I would like to use the one on Marion Road this evening. And then just to Shonda, thank you. I'm telling you now, we'll, we'll definitely have this conversation again, June, July. We'll get, we'll get you taken care of.
I want my bar with some beer.
[laughing].
Before we move forward, a question to the clerk. Would you like a separate resolution on the, amendment to the resolution to issue the first two and then a third to address Marion Road if we wish to pull it? Or do you want it as one resolution and sign out the three licenses?
I would prefer one.
Okay.
If everybody is in agreement with that.
Everybody okay with, I mean, let, open discussion first. Is everybody in an agreement to reassign the Marion Road liquor license to another location?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there consensus? Do we need a separate vote for that or no?
No, because it's, it's our license, it's vacant.
Okay. All right, everybody's in agreement with that, so.
Councilmember Palmyrie, I just want to make sure.
Yes.
Okay. So then the resolution is eighteen dash one forty is to issue now three liquor licenses and do we, I guess, take a vote on?
Wouldn't we have to revoke the other one first?
No, you, you need a motion to amend, to delete one of the options. You have four of them listed.
Actually, I, that was what I started the discussion with, to amend the resolution to offer the licenses to Evergreen, Fletcher's and the Howard.
So there's a amendment to Resolution eighteen dash one forty to issue three liquor licenses and eliminate Carmel Crisp from the license at this time. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Councilmember Alison Osby.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. I just would like to say to Mr. Arneson, thank you for your vision in really creating something unique for our aging population. And also to Jeremy and also the folks at the Howard for taking the risk and also the investment to put back into our community to make this an awesome place to live and to visit. We really appreciate that. I'm very appreciative of that, so thank you for your hard work and dedication and, and wanting to help our community grow.
And I'd also like to just say to Shonda for doing all the things she's done too. And then Jeremy, maybe you might want to get into the gift basket business for the next couple of months.
I'm making a big order of this.
Before we take, well, I just want to also compliment all the applicants because they really have vision and passion for Oshkosh. And that's something that I think this council has been working on for a long time, is to get local business owners to reinvest in Oshkosh. And obviously, they all have that. And so it's a great opportunity for us and I, I'm, I'm sure that down the line, there'll be more investment in Oshkosh as things keep growing and going and what's, what's kind of neat is it's on the west side of Oshkosh with Evergreen, it's the central city with Fletcher's and the Howard. So it's awesome. So with that, we'll take a vote to issue the three licenses that we have available.
No, this is the amendment, correct?
Amendment.
The amendment. Okay. The amendment first, right?
Okay. Peck?
Aye.
Palmyrie?
Aye.
Alison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Carried six.
Okay. So now that we've amended the resolution, eighteen dash one forty, we're voting on liquor licenses for Evergreen Retirement Community, Fletcher's Tap House and the Howard. I'll take the roll call, please.
Peck?
Aye.
Palmyrie?
Aye.
Alison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Carried six.
All right. I will be turning the gavel back over to the mayor to complete the rest of tonight's agenda.
It's a long time to be quiet. I have to, I just have to say one thing. Jeremy, I had a pleasure of going through Fletcher's, well, a couple of years ago and I recall it as a place called Jessenix Pizza and it was amazing, amazing when you took the drop ceiling down, exposed that magnificent wood ceiling that, I'm probably one of the few people in this room that recall Jessenix, but I'm sure there are people out in TV land.
Hey, I do. Watch it. Yeah, watch it.
But not like it is now.
No, no.
And Jeremy, maybe another Acanthus Award may be coming too.
Yeah, beautiful gem.
Nice job in there.
All right. Resolution eighteen dash one forty-one, approve specific implementation plan for construction of the fence, five sixty-sixth North Main Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Pam, anyone from the audience?
I have no one registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, I'm in the wrong category right now. Go ahead. So moved. So moved.
First and second, discussion. I see the magic panel not lighting up, so would you please take the roll?
Peck?
Aye.
Palmyrie?
Aye.
Alison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Resolution eighteen dash one forty-two, approve general development plan for Oshkosh Corporation global headquarters at twenty-one seventy-five Pinocchio Street in Perrin's. Plan Commission recommends approval. Pam, is there anyone who registered to speak to this resolution?
I have no one.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Palmyrie.
Mr. Burridge or Mr. Davis, I just wanted to ask a little bit of clarification about two of the things that are in the general development plan. I realize that this will be coming back as part of the specific implementation plan at a later point, but there's some mention and it looks like the Plan Commission maybe had some conversation about the guardhouse entry gates and five-vehicle outdoor display areas. Would you mind just sharing with the public what those concerns were or are and how they're going to be addressed?
Well, I think the concern that we, we had heard was, or we needed to see some of the elevations on the, on the guard shack. So we, we hadn't been provided with that, that we provided at the SIP level. The concerns on the outdoor display was, we wanted to know what exactly was going to be located in the, in some of those outdoor display areas, how often, what type of product was there, what type of landscaping. So that was kind of the message that we gave to Oshkosh Corp and, and as part of the SIP, we'll be, we'll be filling that out a little bit more because they still need to give us a little bit better management plan for how that's going, going to be utilized.
It's pretty exciting to see some of the sustainability elements. I'm hoping to see a little more specifics on that, but it does look like they have incorporated that, at least in the conceptual stage. And I guess, I was just thinking back as a former military spouse, guard shacks are not always the most attractive thing. So I, I'm sure they would do it, a Class A guard shack were, you know, that to come about, but I just wanted to get a little clarification on that.
Yep, it's still, as, as part of the SIP, we'll be looking at the, at those elevations. We've asked for them to be provided as part of that, so at the SIP level, we'll be reviewing the elevations to make sure it's consistent with the rest of the development that's up there.
Thank you.
I see no one wishing to speak, no one else wishing to speak to this resolution. Would you please take the roll?
Peck?
Aye.
Palmyrie?
Aye.
Alison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Present.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six, one present.
Next, Resolution, Resolution eighteen dash one forty-three, approve development agreement with Oshkosh Corporation for the development of a global headquarters on a portion of Lake Shore Municipal Golf Course. Pam, does anyone register to speak?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
No one wishes to speak to this resolution, would you please take the roll?
Peck?
Aye.
Palmyrie?
Aye.
Alison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Present.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six, one present.
Resolution eighteen dash one forty-four, approve general development plan for a hotel, commercial and retail uses, seventeen hundred block of Oshkosh Avenue in Perrin's. Plan Commission recommends approval. Pam?
I have no one registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Herman, Deputy Mayor Herman.
Mr. Hoopman, you're here, I got a question for you, please? You're the developer for the H2 Oshkosh Ave LLC, correct?
Correct, yes.
And you currently are planning on building or having a hotel built on the Robbins site going east?
Not on the Robbins site, on the site just south of the Robbins.
South, just south of Robbins?
Correct.
Okay. And you're doing this development in stages, is that correct?
Yes, the hotel is the first stage and then the retail commercial will be following within hopefully three to four months, five months.
Okay. That's kind of what I was just curious, and so you're, you're kind of, and the map shows now, if you can look at it, it shows that, that it's kind of a complex. Is that kind of what you're looking at?
Correct.
In a sense? Okay. And do you know, are you going to have to, as part of this, access some of the golf course frontage for that?
It depends on how the street ends up out in front.
Okay, okay. That's all I have for, for you, thank you very much. Mr. Davis, on the planning, I know there was some discussion and it looks like in the maps that you provided us, that Kohler Street is going to go behind this complex?
Yes, it'll connect from where Rath Lane and Keller kind of.
Okay, and then it'll, and also intersect with Northwest Field, correct?
Yes, it'll loop all the way around.
Do you anticipate that we'll, we'll need to take some frontage of the golf course on that site?
At this point.
Of the road or are you looking at basically the width of what's there now going to Robbins the one side and to Two Brothers to the west?
I anticipate totaling up all the, the square feet that we need for the future right away that was, we've talked about expanding Oshkosh Ave and making Westfield wider and we've done some preliminary estimates as to swapping that between the frontage and the rear part, and I think that's the area you're talking about.
Right.
So we've come up with some rough estimates that it's going to be about a wash between what is dedicated across Oshkosh Ave frontage and what would be swapped out between Keller and the hotel location.
Because the long-range plans or plans are that access to this property would be off of the Kohler Street, not the Oshkosh Ave site?
Would not have access to Oshkosh Ave, it'll probably come off of Westfield or Keller.
Keller, okay. All right, thank you.
I just have one question for Mr. Hoopman. You know, the Plan Commission has raised the bar architecturally, we're looking for three sixty design and this is part of our whole plan. Our first decision was to, you know, increase the architectural integrity of the central garage or field operations facility. My concern has been, I think, that of many Plan Commission members, when will we start seeing facades?
When will what?
When will we start seeing facades? What will this area look like?
We have actually a meeting tomorrow morning and a meeting Thursday to start working on the site improvement plan and so we will then, you know, have that information available. We're pretty much looking at brick, probably up through the third floor and then some type of EFS on the fourth floor to meet the seventy-five percent Class One material.
Because, you know, Oshkosh Corporation is making rather a major investment, Evergreen Manor has made a multimillion dollar investment and I think you're going to see us demanding higher quality than you've ever seen from this council.
What you're going to see on that front is, is part of the SIP approval process, that's when we'll get into the actual details of the facades itself, so that's when you're going to get those renderings. And as each, each phase moves forward as part of the SIP process, then you'll be seeing that, you'll be seeing those facades as it's coming through, through that process. I think Mr. Hoopman is looking, the first phase of this development is he's going to, he wants to get the hotel underway, so I think that's the next phase, that's the first underway. So, I think that's the next phase, that's the first phase of a set of facades that you'll be seeing coming through the process.
So, they'll go, they'll go to the Plan Commission first, and they'll come to the council.
Correct.
Councilmember Palmary.
Mr. Hoopman, if I may. So, I'm looking at this. And so, we're looking at hotel, commercial, and retail. Is there, or was there a thought to also adding potentially residential apartment type into the mixed use as well?
No.
No, there never was.
No, it's an extended stay hotel, which is studios or one bedroom, but with a full-size stove, a full-size refrigerator, in anticipation that, there's no extended stay in Oshkosh. And so, typically, you're extended, not that we wouldn't lease or rent for one night, but it's typically three to five to fifteen nights that visitors, guests would stay.
So, on the second story, for example, of building number two, on the southeast corner, the retail restaurant, and then story number two would be, what would be on the second story? I'm a little confused there. Or, it looks like, you know, restaurants and retail. What would be in the second floor of those offices? Or, I guess my question is, you know, whether or not there was any intent to add any kind of residential?
Okay, building number one is the hotel. There's not a restaurant in there, but there would be continental breakfast served in the morning. And there is a bar that is in there, open to the guests, not to the public, but it's open to the guests for social or at night and so forth. Building number two is a single-story retail that we're looking at right now. And I mean, again, this is just projected, but would be more of a single-story retail type of operation. The building number four, we've had some discussions from, with some healthcare providers for a clinic in that area as a possibility. And then, building number three is, would be a drive-through. We've been in discussions with a number of different drive-through providers. And then, building number five, our idea is more of a steakhouse back there in that area, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pansky.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is actually for Darren. It looks like this is six point four acres. I don't know how much of that is actual green space. It looks, looking at one of the maps, it looks like there is quite a bit of green space in there that will be taken over then by buildings and a central parking lot. My question is, does this cut into, I know we've had plenty of conversations about the percentage of green space in the municipality. Does this take away yet again from the amount of green space that we have here in Oshkosh?
Well, there is green on it right now, but it's meeting, I believe it's, we've done the calculations, and it's meeting our minimum requirements in this district. And I don't have the code with me.
It does meet the minimum requirements, though.
Correct. Yeah, or else we would have put a base standard modification in the staff report regarding that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you, Mayor. Just my question in regards to, when we talk about retail uses, that's probably been the single most question asked, is what type of retail? Would you be able to help me with that, Steve?
Yeah, this time not really. You know, maybe FedEx or UBS or IBLX or something like that. We don't have any frequency in that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Crowsey.
You've mentioned drive-through business. That typically is a fast food chain, so...
Yes, this would be...
That would be that.
One of the fast food, probably a coffee shop, donut, bagel shop. There's several of them that are, that are looking at expanding.
Because like the mayor said, we're not sure if we want like a McDonald's or something on that street, correct?
I think we want a McDonald's there.
We would want a McDonald's.
We don't. I mean, this is a new gateway into the city.
Correct.
We don't do it right this time.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, drive-through restaurants, franchise.
Yeah, and part of the regulations that, that the window can't be facing the road. And so, we compensated for all that with designs. And again, this is kind of, this is the general concept for both phases, but we're really looking for the SIP, for the hotel, to be able to get that under construction by June.
No KFC then?
No, not that I know of.
Councilmember Pack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I mean, yeah, I mean, we're not, is, you know, I wouldn't want to see just your everyday run-of-the-mill drive-through. But if you have been through the country, there is a McDonald's that is actually located in a historical colonial structure. In Asheville, North Carolina, there is a McDonald's right outside the entrance to the Biltmore properties that, short of just seeing the golden arches on the front of it, if it weren't on there, you would not know it's a McDonald's. Obviously, the SIP can be done in such a way to fit these things in and to do that. Excuse me, as I said, I don't want to just see your cookie cutter, run-of-the-mill, fast food restaurant in there. But there are ways of, they, these businesses understand where they're locating and what they need to do to up the standards. So, and I think that it's been said, it's been heard. Mr. Hoopman recognizes this. He did indicate that it is there. So, you know, you can have these things and still up the standards. But I would urge you to take a look at some of these types of facilities throughout the country that have, in similar situations that we have, that they have up the standards. And the businesses that want to locate there, they know that they want to locate there because that's where they decide to, that's where they know they will be successful. But they know in order to be successful and locate there, they have to meet certain requirements.
As a follow-up to what Mr. Pack said too, I've seen McDonald's in Europe where you have to really look hard to know that it's McDonald's. And all of these big franchises, they have their A Designs, B Designs, C Designs, and F Designs. And we want the A Designs. They've got to know that we're not going to accept their second-rate designs. We see that with CVS Pharmacy. We got their F Design out on Ninth Street. I've seen their CVS pharmacies in Charleston, North Carolina, and they fit the community. So, we're just not going to accept, you know, third-rate design from these companies anymore. They want to do business here. If there's no further discussions, would you take the roll?
Pack?
Aye.
Palmary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
We have the agenda council discussion, direction of the city manager, and future agenda items. There is nothing there. So, we'll move on to the second opportunity for citizens to address the council.
Oh, okay, got it.
Pam, did anyone sign up?
No one is registered.
Then we'll move on to council.
Can I speak over? I didn't know we had to sign up. I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, sure.
Can I stop with the sergeant first and then he'll, just get your info?
Jeremy West.
He loves them base drive-throughs.
Yeah, that's alright. Just got to follow the procedure.
No.
Jeremy, you can do it afterwards.
Okay.
I know where you live.
We know where to find you, yeah. I just wanted to say thank you tonight. I mean, the time that you guys took to listen to everybody was great. And I'm just a, I'm just a guy. You know, I can't, I moved here to Oshkosh ten years ago with forty thousand dollars that I'd saved for ten years to open up the varsity club. And, you know, I'm so proud to be part of this community and what you guys have done for us. So, thank you.
And we're proud that you have decided to make Oshkosh your home. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Announcements and Statements. Councilmember Pack, do you have something you'd like to talk about?
Yes, I'm going to read something out of a recent article in a, in a major publication. Loathe your commute. Well, you won't have to travel as far, deal with as much stress in Oshkosh, according to the data. Aside from a more-than-stellar commute time, the cost of living in this city is one of the major selling points as well. Additionally, this economically diverse location thrives in industries ranging from forest products to technology. That is a, an excerpt from a recent article in CIO Magazine, Chief Information Officer, about ten under-the-radar cities with great tech career opportunities. I did see that, I saw this online in some of the things that I get. And I thank the Northwestern for picking it up and actually running with it and putting it out there that this is something. But CIO Magazine ranked, as I say, ten under-the-radar cities with great tech career opportunities. The interesting thing is, Oshkosh ranked third, and in ninth place was Wausau, Wisconsin. Two out of the ten places that are under the radar for tech careers are in Wisconsin. And the third best place for that is our great city here. So, we are doing wonderful things in this community to facilitate economic development. And I think that we're going to see much greater things. And again, I thank the Northwestern for pulling that out and highlighting it in a recent article.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Pack. On to city manager roll-off for announcements and statements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder, State of the City is Monday, March nineteenth. I think Emily has been in contact with all of you regarding presentations for the award ceremony at the conclusion of the State of the City. Doors open at six. Encourage you to get there right away. We'll have, we always work it with the community foundation, have their salute education. So, we'll have people showing up even before six o'clock. So, looking forward to that. And I think you'll be pleased with what we've been working on the last few months. The fourth quarter preliminary, and I emphasize preliminary, revenue and expense statements are here. Ms. Larson's a little under the weather, otherwise she would be here. We're a little bit over on revenue, just, you know, slightly, just a little over a hundred percent of revenue, and we're at about ninety-nine percent of expenditures. You can't get much closer than that. What that means, though, is it's about a six hundred thousand dollar surplus for 2017. Ms. Larson is still working on some other adjustments. That could, that could go up. It will likely not go down. So, again, that's a great number, but it's still very much close to what our budgets are. Expenditure-wise, everybody did their job in sort of keeping in line. The commodities are the ones that we've been benefiting from, salt, fuel. Those are the things that we've benefited from. I say that during a mild winter. We will have a bad winter one day, one year, and our budget will be busted. That's what the reserves get built up for those days. You don't necessarily add more to the budget, you just recognize it. In those years, we'll have a shortfall, and you'll be aware of it, and we'll make that adjustment at that time. But the commodities are certainly working in our favor, and they've worked against our favor, if you remember, 2008. So, we'll just have to be ready for those days when they come. But we're doing very well and appreciate all the work that Ms. Larson and her staff have been working on it. And I'm hoping that she's on the mend. She was feeling pretty lousy when I suggested she go home. No, check that, ordered her to go home. So, anyway, she's been working really hard. Engineering services agreement, Mary Jewel Park control system configuration, just one element of the project that we're working on over there. Again, I like to remind people, that has nothing to do with the Oshkosh Corp. project. In fact, the Oshkosh Corp. facility won't even be served by that lift station. A lot of people, we've been working on this project for several years, and this is just a culmination of that. And then, the corporation timeline is in your packet, but we jumped a few hurdles tonight, and we'll be bringing things forward. The development agreement, Ms. Lawrenson did a ton of work to get that going. Really appreciate all the work she did. We have a few more hurdles to work through. The archaeological item, while it's, I think it's been a little overblown, it's all subject to weather. So, just pray for good weather so they can get that dig done. Once the dig gets done, we're going to know fairly quickly what we have there. But it has to go through the process of getting reviewed and approved. I have every belief that it'll go well, it's just that it takes time for those things to happen. So, we expect that they'll be having their groundbreaking announced fairly soon after we get the, get all the reports submitted. Once we submit the reports to the DNR, we'll have a good feel for what it is already, but it just has to go through the process. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. And let's serve any questions.
I see no one waiting to ask a question, so I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.